Right, it is six o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Mr. Merrick, can you take a roll call attendance, please?
Sure, Councilmember Henry.
I'm here, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Present.
Councilmember Sayer.
Here, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Here, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Courtney Johnson is here. Alright, welcome, everybody, and thank you for joining us for tonight's meeting. We value our residents and community members, and even though our doors are temporarily closed during business hours to protect you all, we want to make sure that anyone who wants to participate in our meetings can and does so. State statute allows the city to conduct the meetings by telephone, and the council recently took action to allow our city council and commissions to temporarily take place remotely during this pandemic emergency. This meeting will be open to the public, but precautions as set forth for the Centers for Disease Control, the Minnesota Department of Health, and Carver County Public Health should be exercised. Alternatively, participants can join this meeting remotely via Zoom conferencing services. Zoom is a free service that can be accessed via the following. On your mobile devices, you can download the Zoom app from the App Store or Google Play. On your desktop computer or iPad, you can log into zoom.us from your computer or similar device. Or if you want to call in, the number to call in is 253-215-8782. When prompted, you'll enter the meeting ID number, which is 987-582-3354. So just to go over that again, the phone number is 253-215-8782. And then when you're prompted, the meeting ID is 987-5802-3354. For anyone joining us by phone only, please be aware of these important instructions. We are broadcasting and recording this meeting live. You will need to watch the meeting online if you would like to see any visuals presented during the meeting. There could be up to a one-minute delay from the live conference call in the online broadcast, meaning that there could be up to one minute ahead of what you were seeing on your screen. Please mute any external devices like your TV, music, or computer speakers to avoid distractions if addressing the council. All participants calling into the meeting will be muted until the citizens' comments are recognized. You will be prompted by the mayor to speak at the appropriate time. Lines will be temporarily unmuted when the mayor calls and asks for public comment. We ask that anyone wishing to address the council, ask to be recognized, be respectful, wait your turn to speak, and don't speak over one another. It is important that all council members and members of the public be able to speak and hear each other and the discussion, so please speak loudly, speak clearly, and speak directly into your phone or microphone. Please listen carefully to the mayor's cues. Callers wishing to be recognized must speak up and get into queue when prompted by the mayor. Callers will still need to provide their names and addresses for the record. Finally, different from our usual process, all the actions of the council will be taken by a roll call vote, and each will repeat their names for the record. This is a new process for us all, and we thank you for your patience and constructive feedback as we work through this unprecedented situation. We are working hard to ensure that your voice is heard while maintaining everyone's health and safety. Alright, moving on through the agenda, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second, Councilmember Mock.
And a second by Councilmember Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry, sorry, Brent, we're gonna need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
And Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. Alright, moving on to community comment, this will be the time if anybody from the community has joined in on the call would like to make any comments, you can do so now, and I will give about a minute to allow for the lay delay on the broadcast on the internet.
Mayor Johnson?
Yep.
We don't have any guests on the Zoom call, so there's not anybody who's doing both right now, so.
Okay, we know that nobody's dialed in.
Yeah, there's, the only participants are council and staff at this point.
Alright, so assuming that there's no community comment, we have no presentations and reports. Or I'm sorry, for presentations and reports, we do have something. Ms. Smith, you have an introduction to make.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I want to give an introduction to Beth Richmond and Brad Shive. They both work with HKGI, and they will be the consultant planners that will be filling in for me while I'm on maternity leave, starting sometime soon, lasting into July. So both Beth and Brad are here tonight to say hello. You both want to do a quick intro? That would be fantastic. Beth, do you want to go first?
Sure, thanks Erin. As Erin said, I'm a planner with HKGI. I've been there for about two years now, and looking forward to working with all of you.
Alright, so was it my turn? I am also a planner with Hoyson and Cova Group, and I have been with the firm since 1997, so quite a while. I am a principal with the firm. I first met Erin when we worked together in Victoria before she came to Carver. And both Beth and I, we do a lot of planning project work, and both of us have a couple of different cities that we do day-to-day services for. And so we're well-equipped to help step in and fill the big shoes that Erin has provided for you the last several years. We're excited that it's the opportunity to help out.
So the plan is right now, my out-of-office and then my voicemail will both give Beth's information, just so if somebody calls, they'll know that I'm not completely blowing them off for 12 weeks, and that they have somebody else to reach out to. Otherwise, if anyone on the council or the mayor has questions, I'd encourage you to reach out to Beth, Brad, let Brent generally know what you're working on, but they both will do a fantastic job while I'm gone.
Great. Welcome aboard, Beth and Brad. Does anybody have any questions for new team members?
I have a question for Brent. Do Erin, well, Erin, is your contact info on the website right now, Erin?
Once I am not around, it will be updated, but for now, it's still.
So it will, Beth and Brad, then will their contact info be available online?
Yes.
Alright, hearing no other questions, we will move on to, there are no public hearings, we will move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Glenn Henry.
Alright, a motion by Councilmember Henry and a s-
Second for me.
Okay.
Second.
A second by Councilmember Sayer. Mr. Merrick, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. Thank you. Alright, no unfinished business tonight. For new business, we have 9.1 utility billing, the COVID-19 response. Mr. Merrick?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In your packet, a resolution for your consideration, 11220, which has been reviewed by the city attorney. The city issues a monthly billing statement for water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater. The city code allows for a late payment penalty of $15, which is split over those three enterprise funds after a bill is 30 days past due. In addition, the city code stipulates that for an account that's 90 days past due, the city can move forward with a disconnection of that utility service, and there are different processes that the code specifies in order to go through a disconnection procedure. For example, the user can request a public query of the city council to review their bill. The proposed resolution would temporarily suspend late payment penalties, add the disconnection procedures. The late payment penalties are related to the financial impact that has been caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, and the disconnection notice is related to that in that water sanitary sewer service is an essential service, and no matter what someone's financial situation is right now, we want to make sure for the ordinance or the resolution would preserve people's access to that essential service through the pandemic. For March of 2020, the city had imposed just over $2,000 in late payment penalties on past due accounts. So it gives you a little bit of a frame of reference, and that will ebb and flow depending upon the time of year. So happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Brent? Or would like to make a motion?
I was just gonna make the motion, that's all.
How about it?
Alright, I'd like to make a motion approving Resolution Number 112-20, Resolution Suspending Certain Utility Account Collection Procedures.
I'll second it.
Alright, we have a motion by Councilmember Mock and a second by Councilmember Henry. Mr. Merrick, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. Alright, moving on to communications, 10.1, the COVID-19 response update. Mr. Merrick?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You may remember that the last action that was taken was to close City Hall and rental spaces through April 30th. What we would like the council to consider tonight is extending that through the end of the day, May 4th, at the earliest, and that would provide the council and staff with the opportunity to have a conversation at your May 4th council meeting. We're unsure of what the status of the pandemic will be, what the state's response to it will be, and then how that relates on a local level pertaining to the services that we provide at the service counter, facility rentals and so on, and so I didn't really feel like we were in a space right now to extend it beyond your May 4th meeting, but want to be kind of hand-in-hand with the council on making these decisions on a going-forward basis. So I just wanted to open it up for discussion before I get to the rest of the update, if the council would be willing to extend the closure and facility rental suspension through, we'd probably put it at the end of the day, May 4th, and then address it as an agenda item on the 4th of the meeting.
My only, this is Lori Sayer. My only comment would be I support it. I like that it aligns with some of the other dates or milestones that we have in place, knowing that things might change, but at least we'll be pretty organized on that meeting.
So like, if the council would be willing, if we could get a motion to that effect to extend the closure of City Hall and the suspension of rental facilities through May 4th, 2020?
I'll make a motion to extend the closure of City Hall and make an extension on, I might need a little help here.
The suspension of facility rentals through May 4th.
Extension of facility rentals until end of day, May 4th.
So that was Lori with the motion and Glenn with the second. Any further discussion? Alright, Mr. Merrick, do you want to do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Henry.
Aye, Glenn Henry.
Councilmember Mock.
Aye, Kristi Mock.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson.
Thank you. A couple other items related to COVID, excuse me, COVID-19. The Carver Funny Library System is going to be, again, servicing the express library lockers that are in Carver Station, so that was just shared with us today, and so that will be open. We've made arrangements for the doors to be open at the Carver Station building. We've done a social media post related to that. We've also reached out to our contract custodial service, and so they'll be cleaning that space on a regular basis. Another update that we're working on is just kind of doing an all-staff review on the types of transactions that we have at the service counter at City Hall. We've done, the group, Vicki and Erin and the whole team has done a great job as it relates to services on a City Hall and trying to work within kind of our new normal related to video inspections and online bill submissions, et cetera, but at some point, we're going to be opening that space, but one of the things that we really want to work on is is looking at the transactions and service requests that we do get. And then, so we're inventorying them and then trying to find additional ways that would encourage folks to use alternative means rather than coming into City Hall, at least for this interim basis, so looking at, hope people are submitting permit, building permit applications or paying their utility bill, asking a question of a building inspector, really want to try to identify those areas and look at are the alternatives that we're providing adequate or are there more robust ways that we can service folks? Another piece that we've, we've made an investment, a few hundred dollars in some temporary sneeze guards for the service counter, so they're something that can be easily placed and then removed. Some cities are doing something semi-permanent, this is quite a bit of a lower-cost alternative to doing that, while providing the same protection for employees. We're working with Brian's team and Public Services and the Fire Department. We're looking at a long-term strategy to keep that building close to the public. It's really kind of an internal kind of office area we're really trying to focus. Folks that have a city service need to use the City Hall or the other resources or alternatives to service, the physical service that I had mentioned before, and so looking at some ways to better handle deliveries in that fire station public services building. And then the final piece, just got an email late this afternoon, there's a community group that's, I think they're calling themselves Carver Helpers. They're really trying to recognize essential services, essential service workers, and other people on the frontline, frontlines in this global pandemic, and so they're, they asked for permission to put a kind of a Carver Cares or Carver Helpers sign in Deep Hole Park. And so we granted them permission to do so, and they're going to be working on some other initiatives to kind of rally the community support for those critical care workers that we have in our community, so there'll be some more information headed your way on that, but I just wanted to let you know there, you will see a sign shortly in Deep Hole Park related to that effort. Any questions on the pandemic response before I move on to some other items?
Kristi?
Brent, are we still hosting the blood drive on April 27th?
Correct. The Red Cross provided a protocol for safety measures that they're taking. It's, and it's been pretty rout- routine, if I can say that, where they are doing a blood drive in Watertown and Maconia. I think they've done one recently in Chan, so we are looking at that as kind of a outlier or a standalone use of our space considering the need for that blood in our community. So that'll be happening on the, is it the 27th?
I think it's the 27th, yes.
It is.
27th, so.
It's my understanding that they, the appointments are full? So if it remains that way, do we want to host something so that when people see you coming in and out of the City Hall, that they don't think, oh, I should run in and give blood quick, and we can keep separated from people who maybe don't have an appointment, who are, wanna, you know, who want to donate, but we really can't be having that many people coming in and out?
Yep, that's a good idea. We can do that. Another thing that Vicki had brought up is we're gonna make sure, even though it seems a little bit, it's just a kind of a sign of the times, we're gonna restrict access to the upper-level part of the building, just because at your point, Councilmember Mock, when people see others going in and out of the building, I think they're gonna assume that the space is open and might want to come in and do some business, even though the service counter is closed, and so we'll be taking some additional precautions related to access to the upper level. But we can certainly add that signage piece, too. That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Joy?
Regarding the Carver Library and the remote pickup at Carver Station, what triggered that being reopened?
It's funny, there is some comments made at a county board meeting recently, excuse me, related to library services, and then I watched that board meeting, and then I asked a follow-up question at our daily COVID briefing with emergency management, and I, we were, the city was initially told that that wasn't being serviced, and then we found out that they were servicing the library or the express library and mayor, and there's some other services being provided. So I would say we found out by happenstance, and so now that service is being provided back here at Carver.
I think that's a good thing. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Questions? Did you have more?
I do, but I realize that I'll see that to the end. We have another additional agenda item after the COVID-19 response, so.
Okay, so moving on to item 10.2, the Scott County Trail. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, there is no formal request before you. This is just an intro to a project. Towards the end, I'll get to what the request will be at the May 4th meeting, but again, tonight, just an intro to the project. So the project is called the Marion Junction Trail. It's a project that has had several partnerships. I'll go through some of the information on the next slide, but it's largely a project that is being spearheaded by Scott County. So you can see on the map here, it is a trail connection that would start at the Louisville Swamp for the trailhead and travel across the Minnesota River into downtown Carver for a trail connection. So they're calling it a Rails to Trails Project. It includes some bridges aligned with where the previous bridge was, so a nod to some of Carver's heritage and history. But going into some of the nitty-gritty of the project details, so it's, the project started in 2008, and there was a joint powers agreement with Scott County, Carver County, the City of Carver, the City of Chaska, and the Met Council. They've been working on the project ever since. In 2011, there was a master plan that was created by Scott County and Carver County. Again, Rails to Trails offers bike and pedestrian access across the Minnesota River straight into downtown Carver, which is exciting for us. It's roughly just over two miles for a connection, includes four bridges. Again, trailhead with parking would be in the Louisville Swamp, would allow people to travel downtown Carver into the greater trail system, with parking would be available there. Something that's helpful to note is that this project has been included in the 2010 update to the comp plan as well as design carver. I'll show you the comp plan map on the next slide that shows that we had it included as part of our project. Scott County is currently going after the bonding bill. In total, it's a $17 million project, and they're asking for that amount from the state legislature. So no ask financially from the City of Carver at this time. They're going fully for the bonding bill at $17 million. So again, tonight is just an intro. Ask some questions if you have them, and then at the May 4th meeting, we'll be asking for a letter of support that will be submitted with a bonding bill by Scott County, so hopefully I will be on leave by then, and I will lob it to Brent to follow through on the letter of support. So the maps on the screen now show, on the left, the comp plan, so you can see here in the yellow is the planned trail section. You can see it was included in our plan. It's also in the 2010 plan. And again, travels from the Louisville Swamp into downtown Carver. There's some exciting features, including bridges, I suspect some boardwalks, if it's swampy, just due to the location of it. But generally, a project that we've been planning for, so the letter of support will be before you at the May 4th council meeting. I'll open it up for questions.
Hey Erin, just knowing that we wouldn't do a letter of support until May 4th, does that work for Scott County's timeline, knowing that the session ends on May 18th? That seems a little last minute.
They are trying to do a submission on May 12th, so it does work for their timeline.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Just while I'm speaking, I love this. I think that this could bring some really good things from Carver and bring a little bit more pedestrian and bicycle and folks who are up for a stroll traffic into our city. The only the only thing that makes me just a little bit nervous is kind of from a competition standpoint, because we are also holding our hands out to the legislature, looking for some bonding money. Almost exactly half of the amount that they're looking for here, so I just worry just a little bit, although I don't think it's a strong enough reason to not support such a really great project, but just from a competition perspective, it makes me a little nervous.
When I look, when I look at the, at the trail, after it crosses 169, it goes straight to the casino. Is this what we're kind of promoting or what? I'm just throwing it out there.
That's part of Scott County's larger trail system, so not something that may necessarily have a ton of say in, but yes, it does lead in that general direction for a while.
Got it. Has anybody ever been on that side of the river and toured the road as it, well, as it currently is? Question to the council?
No.
Nope.
Alright, it's an interesting area, I'll say that. It's swampy, and we had four bridges there, and apparently all four bridges are gone, and we're gonna come back and rebuild them, so. That, I mean, for the trails, it'll be a great thing. It's just kind of annoying that 10 years ago, when it was brought to people's attention, we already have bridges there and we should use them, so we're gonna get rid of them. Anyway, that's my two cents, Brent.
Anybody else have comments? Joy, Kristi, Lori?
I, Glenn, I was just gonna comment on the bridge, yeah. I mean, I was a staff person when that was taken out, but from the reports that came back from the engineers, that bridge was structurally deficient, which was part of the caveat that it didn't go forward with any kind of trail struck at that time, so I just wanted to add, I guess, that two cents back there of why that bridge was taken down, because it was structurally not sound to create the need for that trail over it. That's all I have. This is Lori. I don't know, can you hear me?
Yes.
Do you see me or are you seeing my desk?
No, we're looking at your desk.
Sorry, and I'm trying to like go back to the center view. There you go.
We could see you for a second there. There we go.
You see me?
We can hear you, Lori.
You can hear me, but can you see me?
Nope, we see your desk.
But I'm really glad I cleaned that off. See you down that way.
There, now we see you.
Okay, alright, so a couple things, concept level, really like this just because one of my initiatives is trail connectivity. When we get more information, if we could get in the next packet, maybe a copy of the 2010, if that was drafted or what was presented in 2011, I'm curious to know if our verbiage will be different, like, do we support the same, like, has anything changed from the support we showed in the past to now? And then, thank you, Mayor Johnson, for bringing up, because this wouldn't have come to my mind, that there's more than one group, more than- um there's more than one group, more than more than one person asking, you know, legislation for some uh money. And any information that you could include in the packet on what's the difference between what we're also supporting and asking for versus this, because I would be concerned if we were competing against ourselves. Um so that would be helpful information to have.
Well, um sure, Lori, I can answer that question right now.
Oh, good.
We um we are looking for nine million dollars from the bonding bill for the levy recertification project, for the levy improvement project, and I think, as you all know, that nine million dollars is nine million dollars out of, out of an eleven million dollar project. Um we would have to provide the local match of the remaining two million dollars. The good thing about that local match is that we can find additional funding partners, so that could potentially come from watershed districts or the county. Um so I'm kind of doing um along with Brent and our consultants, um I'm kind of going around talking to a fair amount of people with my handout, so see where else we can find money to go towards that that local match number. So that's um that's the project. I think you guys all know, recertification or the levy improvements is not a tear it down, start from scratch, it's improving the four areas where the levy is structurally insufficient, so it's the height, the slopes, the lack of internal drainage, and then um the clear zone, where there are some structures and vegetation within fifteen feet of levy.
So for what we are needing support financially, like the bucket that that comes out of um at the state level, is that the same bucket that the Merriam-Jonsham Trail would be asking for money from? Or do we just not know that?
I think it depends, Erin. I'll let you reel me in if I'm wrong. We are looking for, we're looking at a couple of different sources. We're looking to get potentially some DNR funds um or if not, just straight bonding bill money. And I don't even know, Erin, if my concerns about, you know, being in competition are are legit or something that you um see is is valid. Um but I just, and this is a Scott County project. It would mention if you dive in deeper, a little bit deeper, um that it will, you know, go through Carver County and kind of touch our banks, if you will. Um but it's not like we're necessarily in competition for ourselves. I don't think that our our name is not stamped on this project, because it is a Scott County project.
Okay. I'd agree with everything you said.
Thank you.
Good, thanks for answering that, and now just kind of give me a clearer picture.
Joy, any questions, comments?
I don't have any questions. I um I think this is a great idea. Um I love another connection across the river to connect to Scott County. Um there's a connection in at forty-one, um but that connection is oftentimes flooded, so not always available to us, and then the next one isn't until one oh one, so I like that there's another connection from a pedestrian bicycle um way across the river, and I agree, it'll be a a big boon for Carver and for Chaska, just to really connect that whole trail system. So I like it.
All right. Any other comments? All right, hearing none, um let's, Erin, you didn't eat anything from us. You got exactly that tonight. You're good?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um all right, let's move on. Um let's see. Councilmember, communications updates. Lori, do you want to start?
Um yes, we have a plant uh parks meeting on the calendar for early May of, I think, May thirteenth. Uh so we'll just see what's needed on the agenda and um what makes sense, so um in a errand out, we'll look to Brent and the consultants to give us some direction. That is all.
Great. Uh Christie?
Thanks, I have two things. Um one, I wanted to um say thanks um to city staff. At one of our last meetings, we talked about for the historic district, having letters sent out um as just a reminder as the outdoor and the construction season starts, and I did get the letter in the mail. I live in the historic district, so I know that it happened, so I appreciate that you sent that out. Um and then I have one, another one that I want the council to consider. And then, excuse me, um looking moving forward with possibly doing a three sixty review at the staff level. We've had some staff turnover um in the last couple of years, and we've had two more that are now um leaving us this month. And we are looking to put the view out to the residents, so we're gonna get a lot of feedback from that side of things. But I'm wondering if now is the time to possibly look at doing a three sixty review. Um we do from the top down a lot, but possibly looking at doing from the bottom up. Um just so we can maybe identify, you know, where our strengths are at, some maybe our deficiencies. Um you know, our staff is really important to us, and staff retention is really important. We put a lot of time and and effort into training and and, you know, becoming a a nice work family. So I think that looking at some of our, some of our staff departures, um having a way of doing like an anonymous three six, three sixty review within staff, so that we can just take a look at where we stand and how we can be the best employers and the best um, you know, council members and co-staff that we can need. Just as an example, I know we do one for at my job, in my position every year, we have a chance to to do it, and it's not all a big, you know, bashing session, but there's things you can look at as to how we're doing really well and things that maybe we can, we can work on, so um looking for a little input from staff or questions on how they feel about that. I'm sorry, not staff, the council, about doing that with staff.
I think, Christie, there are some elements that Brent's incorporating already of exactly what you're speaking about. And I can let him get into more detail, but I know that he's sent out a survey kind of looking for a lot like, and I think he's shared this with the council, but talking about um kind of mirroring the process that the school district did in their search for a new superintendent as to what qualities, if we have to build a new Brian, um what qualities do we want this person to have? Um what's important, and there's a list of ten kind of um focus areas or priority areas um that you can rank and then provide feedback on that. Um and I don't know, Brent, if you want to go into kind of more detail?
Uh I can provide uh detail on the, so for the public services director, uh just sent out a survey to the um staff and council related to what qualities uh they wanted to see in that position or what the priorities were. Um areas that we are excellent, areas that are identified for a challenge. So we have that for that position. Um I regularly conduct uh what I call an informal exit interview uh with employees before uh they leave. Uh I've taken part in a three sixty review. It's a part of my um ICMA credential manager uh process, so every five years I I go through that process uh for my position with with the team. Um it's, you know, I'm open to it. It's just a matter of identifying um where the um what the need is and then how to get at it. And I, and I sh- I shared this, a council member, McKnight, had a question related to staff last night. I would say that the majority of our uh departures are in the public services department, and I would chalk that up to a couple of areas, primarily is we are uh not a, we are a community that's going to lose or has lost people to larger suburbs. And I shared the example of uh our recent hire. Uh we started at twenty-four fifty, but he had, he was a finalist for a position in Curry that would have paid up twenty-nine dollars an hour, and so um at a five dollar, you know, difference in pay for essentially the same position. Um it gets to be a a challenge. There are, I think, I would say every position has a, has a different story. Um uh Brian leaving compared to like Mark Bastok, our building official, uh left, had some, you know, family issues and relocation was a part of that mix. Um I'm sure if you asked other employees, um depending upon when they left, um it could have been a disagreement with uh management or leadership, uh either by myself or an apartment head or decisions that the council may have, may have made, so um I think every employee has their own story. Some are, you know, just retirements, and so I think if there is a issue that the council is looking to identify, like we think there's a problem here, um I'm I'm happy to investigate that to the degree that, you know, we believe we should, so.
So what I'm, um when I bring this up, so Courtney, I, yes, I know about the survey that we're, you know, what qualities. Um I think we have an opportunity, though, to look um maybe just a little deeper into our um our operations in general, and ours is called, and I'm gonna get it as just an example of, it's an employee engagement survey. So we just, it, there's many, many questions on there about um many different things, so I don't necessarily think that public services is is the only focus or the main focus. I just think, we're watching that we do have some staff turnover. I mean, I I want to see them put down, it's, you know, it's the pay scale or it's the benefits or, you know, or there were, you know, HR issues or something, but I'm looking like holistically at the entire group, so I think I really, I really want our staff to be as happy and as motivated and as, you know, fulfilled in their jobs as they can be, and I'm not in any way saying that they're not, but I think maybe it would be time to just have some kind of engagement survey to see how everyone is feeling, and maybe we let, you know, COVID settle down a little bit, because that could certainly, nobody feels great right now if they have to go into their workplace, I get that. Um and I think we might get some nice feedback, and I think it would just be great to, like I said, see where our strengths lie, maybe where we have some deficiencies within our own systems, um so that we can just provide the best workplace for for everybody.
I don't think it's a bad idea, Christie. Are you thinking of like an internal survey? Because I know the place where I used to work would have employee engagement surveys too, and that was, and it was a little bit of a larger company, but it was um it, we had an outside vendor and it was very, very, very costly, so I just, what does this mean to you?
I don't know exactly what it looks like. This is um, this would be from our staff. It would be our staff doing it. Um and this is just a really preliminary vision, so uh there's nothing here that I really want to push as this set in my mind, but um that we would have would be something where they could uh put in anonymously. I mean, if there is an issue, then it then, you know, people would be more likely to say, hey, I'm having trouble with this, rather, you know, but maybe not to their direct department head. Um person can, wouldn't in state Carver, of course, but could have the power to do something in retaliation. Um see, you know, to, you know, partially a thinking, you know, on the the think side of, you know, if I had this for, you know, electronics equipment, it would be better, or, and then on the feeling side too, you know, how does morale feel right now, or? And I don't have any idea what the questions would look like, but want this to be something big and spendy for the city to do. I just think we, like I said, have an opportunity um to take a look at how our workplace is functioning.
Does anybody else have any feedback to share with Christie?
Um.
Okay, so then we, um what do, do we want to explore this a little bit or not?
I agree with Mayor Johnson that this is not a bad idea, right? It's always good to be um in touch with employee engagement. Um maybe we think about it um on a regular basis, I don't know, so that we have some benchmarks or something like that through time. Just kind of like the community survey that we're doing right now. We plan to redo it in X number of years, just to compare progress. Um so I think that that's maybe something that we should think about a little bit more. Um I also, you know, heard from Brent's updates that he's also doing a lot of one-on-one interviews, so I kind of want to hear that feedback a little bit before, I don't know, make some decisions on additional engagement surveys. That's my thought.
Thank you, Joy. Um and just Christie, the one thing that makes me just a little nervous about this is I would hope that we have a culture here at the city of face-to-face communication, or if you have concerns about going to Brian with your concerns, that you would go to another department head with those concerns. I would just not want, and I don't think that this is necessarily what the case would be, but I wouldn't want this to be a crutch, and, you know, we save everything for October so that we can air all our grievances in this anonymous survey. Let's deal with things as they, as they happen. If you've got an issue, let's bring it up, you know, while it's happening, so that we can make adjustments and not necessarily wait two, four, six, nine months later.
Right, I think in an ideal world, that would, that would always work. I think that some people would have would not feel completely comfortable going to somebody who could, you know, hire and fire them. Um I want you to know that this is not um reflecting on on your leadership. I'm just saying that I think, I think that we shouldn't be scared of the results either. I think it's a learning opportunity to say, hey, okay, if if something isn't, you know, clicking quite right, I think that this is the opportunity to not be afraid of it and to say, just to welcome it, to say, well, how can you do better? Um no one's perfect, no workplace is perfect, no person is perfect, so there's always, we can all have room for improvement. So to, for me, the reason I bring this up is because the, to me, I don't think the results are are scary or should be seen as scary. I think it should be seen, if the, if we decide to do this, as something that really can be helpful to our future.
Glenn, thoughts, comments?
Uh I mean, we usually always evaluate people as a lead. Um I don't mind looking into it, but I think we have a pretty I think we are pretty sound standing on where Brent's at with it. Um I mean, I just want to thank Brian for his years of service. I know he's done a lot for the community. Um I wish him well in the future. Same thing with Luke. Um and of course, Erin, just come back. Um but as far as employees come, employees go, and it's everybody usually is looking to better themselves, and I mean, I don't want to be the turnover, turnover positions where we're just introducing people, training them, and then moving them on uh to greener pastures. Um it is nice to know that we do have a few long-term employees um that I don't believe are looking to go anywhere. Um but then again, I could be wrong. Um evaluating, when they, when they leave, I mean, it's it's fine to evaluate it, but I'm not too always gonna accomplish what we want, what we're looking, I mean.
Right, Glenn, so Glenn, so then maybe it makes sense to talk with our employees before they leave, because this isn't really about exit interviews. This is about if we're looking at retainment too. This would be it, talking to them before.
Well, if I at least share this and let's see how it lands with the group. One of the things that I think our team does really well is um Brian, Erin, and Vicki, and myself of all, as a part of our, kind of our regular work week, do one-on-one interviews with our teams. So once a month, I'll meet with Brian one-on-one for an hour, and then the week after, Erin and Brian does the same, and Erin and and Vicki, and that's really kind of caught on. Uh two years ago, I did one-on-ones with the entire fire department, and um I do think there's some space to grow. I plan on uh doing an exit interview with Brian, but I also plan on doing um an interview with his team after he leaves to talk about where they think we should grow as a follow-up to the um uh online survey or the Survey Monkey tool that we use. Um I do, I do think that, you know, if the council identifies the areas that you want to ask, you know, I, I'm happy to you know, I, I'm happy to facilitate, you know, that either through an online tool. I, I do think that there's a, a danger to the anonymous piece because if it, let's just, I'll be a little crass here to say like, if they ask, like constantly, how does the city manager, you know, rate his performance? And he says, he sucks. You know, what are we supposed to do with that, right? There's not an opportunity to do a follow-up question or ask why, what happened to you? Can you say more about this? But, you know, and I say that not to discredit the, the attempt, but if, if you really want to, to go after, if you want the anonymous piece, I would recommend then hiring somebody, doesn't need to, you don't need to spend a ton of money, but then hiring someone to conduct that survey so they can be anonymous. Because all the anonymous surveys are gonna come to me. And I think people, if they have this mentality that they don't wanna share or they don't wanna share or be connected to those comments, the only way to really cross that bridge is to then hire someone to do, you know, one-on-ones or do a, a, a survey so that they can ask those follow-ups. Cause you're really not, you're only gonna, in my opinion, get superficial responses to a survey question. But if you give it, if you provide an opportunity to do a follow-up. But again, it gets back to, you know, you wanna ask questions about pay? You wanna ask questions about management style, benefits? If, if you identify the areas that you want more information on, there are paths to get there. The approach is slightly different.
Lori, do you have any comments, thoughts on this?
A few little things, not, not like really strong opinion, just more like my own, you know, work experience. I, I find anonymous surveys a little hard, just because you can't have that dialogue. You can't follow up. So, I mean, I think really just to foster the environment where there's just constant communication, just kind of ongoing is, is ideal. If you feel that's not happening, you know, maybe it's two possibilities, like a consultant coming in doing this survey. I'd be curious to know if the consultant that we retained to help with that community survey, since they seem to work with a lot of cities, do they do something similar? Just at a city staff level instead of residents? So, and then too, we might just have an idea of a budget. Is this something to add to a future budget? And then Mayor Johnson could probably relate to this. At a corporate level, I've been in groups that did skip level meetings. So there's different versions of that. But sometimes just kinda seeing the vision from another department head or.
Lori, just define that, just say what that means.
Yeah, skip all, um, so it would be that, um, um, in a county, instead of meeting with Pappy or Brad, they would possibly, they would skip kind of their regular call of who they report to. And they would just go right to, I would think, Mayor Johnson. And then you just get just a different dialogue. Um, I don't know if that was a good example. It's hard to translate it from city government to corporate. But, or I guess like for your seasonals, instead of them, you know, having a one-on-one, giving feedback or concerns they had to their line manager, then they would meet with the department head of public services. So it, it skips a level. But it's not meant to be, you know, tattling. It's, at a strategic level can be really interesting, just cause you see more what all your goals are, what culture you're creating. It's much more of a, of a ongoing communication culture idea. And then it also gives exposure to other leaders, what their peers have going on in their team. Did that help?
Yes, thank you.
So yeah, it's, I mean, I just think ideally, and also not to wait, if there's an issue, let's just get right to it and just have, you know, just a good collaboration and foster an environment where there's that ongoing communication.
So I think what I'm hearing from the majority is not necessarily going ahead with a survey, but fostering more of an environment where we continue to get feedback and a little bit more of an informal process. Does that seem, got a thumbs up from Glenn? Got a thumbs up from Joy? Got a thumbs up from Lori? And that's what I would favor as well. So Kristi, is that the feedback that you're looking for?
Yep, and that, that's just fine. I didn't know if the lead had something with it was tied to a, a template that was very cheap. Obviously, I'm not looking to spend a large amount of money on something like this. But if the rest of the council doesn't wanna look any further into it, then we'll leave it at that.
If I can ask one follow-up, council member, is there, is there, this isn't scientific, but is there a feeling that you have that there might be an area that we're struggling in? That you, you know, cause we can take that and do some follow-up if you feel like there, there is an issue in a particular area.
Um, no, not necessarily. I think, you know, we've just had some staff turnover, like I said, in, in, kind of specifically in, in one department. But that doesn't mean that's the only department. Obviously, we've had, you know, Mark left and things like that too, from more of the office side of things. I just, I think, personally, I think that feedback from other levels, like I said, I do this in my own profession, so we do this at my job, so I'm kind of used to it. It's not very, it's normal for me. I see this every year. And some of the feedback that comes out of it is very helpful. So that's really all I was looking for. There isn't anything that I have a specific, a specific statement to make about anything besides just looking for as much feedback to, or retention as it can have.
Well, I can say that one of the things that's been kind of ongoing is trying to, and I think Aaron, Brian, and Vicky can attest to this. For several years, we've been trying to kinda re-energize and make more productive the annual review. And if you read a, a lot, you know, online or in, in a leadership, you know, magazines, they talk about how antiquated the annual review is. Because why would you wait to give somebody feedback all year? And you're gonna comment on someone's work performance in December that they did last January. There's a lot of antiquated pieces to that. And so we've talked about ways that we can spruce ours up. One of it is related to the one-on-ones, but we've just talked about using different forms and different styles. I tried something out last winter with the group. But there, I, I do appreciate, I do think there's an element related to accountability. And so whether it's the city manager's position or department heads, or if you're in a kind of a middle management position, having some type of vehicle that gets that feedback from the people that you're supervising. So it's not, as you said, the top-down. Because ultimately, being accountable to somebody inspires a different response. And if you don't feel like you're accountable, and part of that is a relationship, that I, I think that we have, part of it is kinda documenting that. So maybe the city council feels, if I can say the word, maybe more secure in the, in the kind of how this culture is being developed and nurtured. So I, I think it's maybe a pause on kinda specifically on action now. But I, I do wanna say that we're, where this is the feedback I'm hearing. I do think that there's space for us to come back to you and say, we heard you, and these are some additional steps that we can take that kinda get at kind of the heart of what you're bringing up. Is that my ringing true? Is that making sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else, Kristi?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joy?
I have no updates. I missed the Carver Business Alliance meeting last Friday, so I look forward to hearing any updates from Brent or Aaron about it. Except for me.
All right. Glenn?
Well, I just wanna reiterate, thank you, Brian, for your years of service. And same to Luke. And Aaron, have a happy, healthy baby. And we'll see you when you get back. That's all I got.
Thank you.
All right. Just a few things for me. Joy, the business, Business Alliance meeting was good. It was our first virtual meeting. And we had a couple of new faces. We had Dirk, who owns the Thrive It Financial that'll be moving in here down off of Broadway. We had, oh, Brent will have to check my math and help me remember who else were the new folks. But had a really good, really good session. It seems like there are, oh, Alita was there from Children of Tomorrow. And I'm not sure that she's attended one of our, our meetings yet. She's had some other folks from Children of Tomorrow attend, but it was.
New two.
Who's that?
Aaron Noble, the new executive director.
That's right. So the new executive director of the Southwest Metro Chamber attended as well. So it was, it was good. The feedback from folks is that this is, all of the COVID-related stuff is affecting just about everybody's business except for Dirk said that business was up. It seems like folks are kinda taking care of that financial aspect that they maybe didn't have time for when things were a little bit busier. But other than that, everybody, for the most part, reported that their business was down. So, but it, you know, kinda despite that, it was a very positive meeting and a really good group. That's always a great group, so. That is my update from that. Other things, I too wanted to recognize Brian for his years of service. Brian, thank you so much. Brian has been, always been the first one that I've had a question. He has got time on my schedule and we have gone out and driven around and shown me what public services storage looks like so that I can wrap my brain around how we might have a need for more storage in the future. Or teaching me about potholes and all of the terms that I can't come up with a single one right now about street level maintenance and how potholes need to be filled with a certain kind of patch. And I really appreciate Brian, all of the time that you've taken to help educate me on some of these topics that I wasn't necessarily an expert and still not, but am a little bit more knowledgeable. So thank you so much. You're gonna be missed. Wish you all well, wish you all the best and have a good time in that other community. I'm sure they'll leave fine.
Their council will be as fabulous.
Yeah. Uh, let's see. Aaron, also, I don't wanna jinx you, but I think this is gonna be our last meeting for a while. Not that we don't wanna see you, but we know that you don't wanna be here in two weeks. So thank you. Can't wait to hear all kinds of baby news. And we wish you all the best and a really great maternity leave.
Because of the baby, not because of the work environment here, right?
Right, right. Let's see, a few other things. There was a phishing scam that was sent out from somebody who claimed to be Courtney Johnson, mayor, council, city Carver, last week, which was not me. I would never make an ask for folks of money here to buy me gift cards. So I don't know if anybody else has noticed this, but I've noticed it on my personal email. It just seems like since all this COVID stuff has ramped up, that the number of phishing emails that I've received too in my personal account have gone up. So really make sure that you check, if the grammar doesn't seem right, there's something off. If it doesn't seem right, always check, you know, the return email. If it doesn't look like it's from Amazon and it's from a different wonky email, it's probably not legit. So sorry for the fire drill on that last week, but just wanted to give everybody a heads up that that was not me and I don't need Amazon gift cards.
I mean, but I sent you all my credit card numbers.
Oh, that I needed, Kristi, that I needed, thank you.
Oh, okay, or did you need the gift cards too or?
Just only from you. Also, the fire department made a post last week. They've been getting a lot of requests from folks in our community who have seen other fire departments do drive-bys to celebrate birthdays. In Carver, the fire department decided that that, and it's a decision that I support 100%, decided that that is something that we will not be doing. Fire department has really gone out of their way to make sure that all of our firefighters are staying as safe as possible. They're only loading the trucks when they absolutely need to. And they are truly only performing essential services. Just because things are so different, unfortunately, those drive-bys with as much joy and what a great thing that those are in other communities, that's not an essential service. And that's not something that we're doing in the city of Carver. So I just wanted to, to mention that as well. And then the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that with some of the, the funding partners that we're looking to get for our funding of the Levy Project, one of those groups is the Lower Minnesota Watershed District. And their, their volunteers, their staff, their, the folks who serve on that board are referred to as managers. They are two managers short. And one of those managers are, the rep, is the representative from Carver County. So they get two folks from Hennepin, one person from Scott, one person from Carver, and one person from Dakota. Nobody's filling the Carver slot nor the Dakota slot. So I'm gonna ask, Brent, I'll forward you the map of those boundaries. I have talked with Gail Deckler and they at the Carver County, they appoint folks to this Watershed District. They're struggling to find somebody. So if anyone knows of anybody who would like to serve on the Lower Minnesota Watershed District, it just seems like we should have Carver County representation there. It also, the map also goes in through Chaska as well, a large portion of Chaska. So I'm gonna be reaching out to Mark Windshiddle to see if he has anybody in mind for that too. Cause it just seems, yes, Kristi?
Do they have to live within, so I believe that map goes partially through Carver.
Yep.
So you have to actually live in that district? You couldn't be a few blocks out of it even?
You have to live in the district. So it's, it's very, very roughly, all of downtown, north of Fourth Street and east of Jonathan Carver Parkway in Carver. So, but we'll.
Does that include the bluffs?
It does not.
It does not, okay.
Yep. So north of Fourth Street from downtown. So like my neighborhood, Lori's neighborhood, Glenn's area, Brent's area, Brent. So roughly that area. Nothing west of Jonathan Carver Parkway and nothing in the bluffs area.
I'll ask Erica when I get home tonight if she wants to be on it.
Voluntold is what we call that, perfect. Let's see, I think that, yeah, that's it for my list. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
Uh, just a few items. Chief Trimble had mentioned the, the city does not have any ordinance that relates to recreational fires. So we've had a uptick in what I described as illegal burns, things that are being, that maybe probably shouldn't be, garbage or other items, et cetera. And so Chief Trimble and some of the officers in the fire department are working with Larry Harris to draft a recreational fire ordinance. So I have it, we're working, they're working on a draft. We'd bring up the draft work session, but the items would be the types of materials you can burn, how close the flame can be to a permanent structure, that type of thing. So I just wanted to give you a preview of that coming down the line. And then one of the things that we're exploring is our sanitation license process that's defined in the ordinance, related to kinda some resident feedback, related to trash being, when it's dumped and kinda thrown upon the streets, kind of other service issues. Asked the city attorney to look at the council, maybe kind of redefining that process and could there possibly be elements for scoring that the council could use and determine who gets a license. Right now, it essentially functions as if you had a license, you'd get a license. And I know there are, there's at least one other sanitation company that would like to, to provide service in Carver, but there's just really not a mechanism for the council to review their license. And what, based on our conversation, at one point, the city had two license holders and they increased that to three. And there's some, there's some things holding you back from probably doing four because for every license holder that you have, that's another garbage truck that's essentially gonna travel throughout the streets. So really wanted to kinda deal back that ordinance and the criteria and get some feedback from the council on if you wanted to look at that in a different way. So any questions on those two figures?
What do we charge for the licenses?
Courtney, if you can ask, Vicky, my recollection is like $50. My recollection is like $50 or $100.
We'd have to look.
Okay.
She'd have to look.
It's a nominal fee compared to maybe some other license programs that we have.
Might be something to look at.
Yep.
Yeah, I would appreciate looking into that. This whole licensing process.
And then, kind of apropos to the conversation, just wanted to recognize Luke Weber. Um, he's been with the city, uh, for I think close to 15 years, if not over that. Uh, he's leaving for a, a different position, uh, at the end of the month. Um, Luke has worked in water, uh, and public services or utilities and works. Um, and I just remember a story where, uh, we have both of our, so Paul Schultz and Larry Revering were out. Luke was on vacation and called them. We didn't have anybody to kind of fill in the blanks, and he came off vacation and, and filled in. Uh, we really didn't have anybody available to, to operate our system. And I always remembered that, and I'm going to be, um, sorry to see him go, but happy that he's going to have an opportunity, uh, somewhere else, um, that he can be happy with and do what's best for his family. And then also, kind of in the spirit of thanking Brian, I wanted to give kind of Brian the last word as this will be his last council meeting here officially with the city. I wanted to thank him, but I wanted to give him an opportunity to, to say farewell to the council and give some parting words. So Brian?
Thanks, Brent. Uh, yep, last, uh, last meeting. So Mayor Council, I do appreciate the last five and a half years, uh, the opportunity that you gave me. Other stuff I've learned, the friendships I've made, um, it has been like a family. Um, moving on, doing something better for my family was not an easy decision. So, um, kind of going back to kind of what's all happening and stuff, um, it was a long, uh, hard-fought, uh, process to go through to make the decision to do this. So, um, everybody's been great, fantastic. Like I said, it's a family, uh, built a lot of friendships, um, and a lot of great things that we did in the last five and a half years in, in Carver and watching it grow. So I do appreciate it. I want to thank you all for it, and hopefully our, all of our paths will cross again, and we'll have an opportunity to work together or maybe do something else, but, so, thank you.
Thank you again, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, um, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
A second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Henry and a second by Councilmember McKnight. Mr. Mayor, can we get a roll call vote, please?
There we go. Uh, Councilmember Henry.
Aye, good night.
Councilmember Mark.
Aye, Christie Mark.
Councilmember Sayer.
Aye, Lori Sayer.
Councilmember McKnight.
Aye, Joy McKnight.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye, Courtney Johnson. Motion passes. All right, good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.